Hello, hello. Good afternoon. Good morning for you, Tema.
Good afternoon for you. Um, how is everything?
Good. What time is in California?
Uh, six thirty-three.
Oh, thirty-three. Do you need a coffee?
Streets are already um starting to to see people, so um. So you know that we start very early here. How is the weather in Madrid?
Good, but oh, I don't remember how to calculate in Fahrenheit degrees. So I can say it's twenty-seven uh Celsius. So you can calculate Fahrenheit.
That should be like a seventy-five, seventy-seven uh Fahrenheit, something like this. Um, with an increment of twenty-five degrees, a magnetic can work or not? Is something um make sense?
Hmm, I only know more than one hundred. It's very dangerous. It's risky.
Well, I mean, I think that the people that we have invited today for this uh this conversation, this webinar, I think that they have much more answers for that question than you and me. Uh, because um today we have very special guests, uh people that they are dealing with real um projects and real um magnetics in real production systems. Um, and I love what you said in the invitation about everything is just not about cost. But I remember that the first time we were talking about with them, they said, yes, it's cost.
Yeah, but really not. We discovered today.
I think that um when companies are looking for uh purchasing their magnetics uh or their components, yes, in general. Um, and one of the main challenges they are facing is trying to do a trade-off between price and making the right decisions in terms of who to work with, uh quality, um. I don't know, a lot of details, and this is what we expect from them.
And I think it's important to take into account uh that this is a long process. It's not only one step, it's not only pay uh for the cheaper ones. Uh, you have to take into account different things that the finally the cost can be bigger than you expected. So um let's see and and let's uh introduce our speakers today. Uh, uh, thank you, Rafa, for uh connecting today. And thank you to MB Electronics. Um, I don't know if I pronounce well your names, but um Jan Banyo and Helke Mars?
Yes.
Yes.
Good, I tried. Okay, um, I think um later with uh with you, with uh Jan and Helke, we are going to uh to announce something that we are happy uh to share today with with everybody. Uh, let's give for for later. But uh today, we are going to divide this webinar in two parts. The first part, we are going to talk with Rafa, an experienced um um empower electronics uh worker. He's going to um to introduce uh in how to choose the best magnetic supplier and which other uh things we need to take into account, not only cost, as we have said with uh the beginning. Uh, then uh we'll have a presentation from MB Electronics. And in the second part of the webinar, um you can you can ask as many questions you want, because all the speakers in the in the panel um will respond everything. Um, also in the in the second part of the panel, answering all the questions, we'll have uh special guests from Triad Magnetics. Uh, welcome, Latharun from Triad.
Thank you.
Happy to to take you here.
Thank you for doing the effort. I know that it's also six-thirty for for Latharun in in South California.
So good morning, Latharun. Thank you for being here today with us. So uh let's start with uh with Rafa. Um, the stick is you.
Thank you very much. You want me to share my screen?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm on my screen too here. So let me know if you already see it.
Yeah.
Very good. And in the meantime, well, let me uh say a few words about myself, okay? So uh my background is basically in automotive applications, okay? I've been uh working for tire ones, uh top tire ones, in fact, in the electrification applications for more than twenty-five years up to now, okay? And well, uh I've been dealing with different projects for power conversion, especially for onboard chargers, DCDC converters and battery disconnection units. And uh well, uh what I'm trying to do here is just to share experience, some some lessons learned and what are the the bullets that I consider are important when selecting the right supplier, but also dealing with a good design. So let me start introducing the index. I'm just checking because of I just have one screen. Please confirm if you already see.
Yeah, perfect.
Very good. So just to start intro- that in introducing with the key bullets I I'm considered. So here the key is just uh what when you requested my participation in the webinar, isn't it? So how is the process for selecting the right supplier and uh confident in order to have a confident solution for that? So what I've been doing here is a work on the whole process since you started dealing with the RFQ from your supply from your OEM, okay? And what are the uh at the end, the different aspects that must be considered, okay? So to me, the goal is to have a a good panel, selection panel, okay? Basic with key miserable, covering all the different selection aspects, okay? Not only for technical side, but also from project perspective. So I divided the presentation in these four blocks, starting with the project, the environment, conditions and the organization culture and so on. Then uh dipping on the application itself, how uh from a product specification you derive uh what the the key requirements or the specific specification for the subcomponents. And finally, my intention is to share with you some lessons learned and also how this panel is built, okay? So going in the next slide here, uh starting with the uh project framework, sorry. So basically, in this slide, what I'm trying to describe are the organizational, the environment, what is the context at the end for deciding what is the the best way to proceed, okay? And and here, well, I started defining what are the key indicators for selecting or having a good a good choice when deciding for the supplier. First of all, is to understand what is the uh the product, isn't it? So basically, to understand the timing, how big is the project in the sense of uh if we are discussing about a production of twenty K parts per year, one hundred K, or it's something smaller, okay? This is key for deciding which uh type of supplier you really need. And also the uh where is gonna be produced. So finally, what are the production sites, the logistics involved on this uh on the on the whole project and the procurement strategy, okay? When I mention here procurement strategy has to do with basically geographics, okay? Where do you plan to produce? Which type of capacity you have to secure and so on and so on. Then we have also the procurement constraints typically are imposed by your purchasing department. Here is uh basically related with the legacy, you already have some incremental suppliers, you have some commercial agreements, what is the quality you are looking for? If there is some reuse strategy from previous projects, okay? Uh, supplier sustainability records evaluation has to do with the environmental, what is the social responsibility behind? This is here also for selecting the right supplier and finally the economic viability, okay? And then we have the uh the what you said at the beginning could be the most important topic, but to me is a a grown approach, is about the cost, okay? So cost is about uh what is the real weight of the magnetic in inside the project, okay? Uh, for instance, if you have a small series, has probably the cost doesn't matter, okay? But if you have a project, the typical automotive project above fifty K parts and so on, then it becomes more and more important. So here, I was also sharing with you the typical timeline for a project, okay? And uh if you look at this diagram, I was uh considering two different stages or phases. One is before you get the uh project award, okay? When basically uh in this phase, you are dealing and engaging with not only with your customers, so the OEM, but also with the suppliers that are competing for the different parts of the project. This is typically done in the RFI. RFI is a request for information or request for quotation, okay? Which is basically when you are defining uh what the product should do or should cover, okay? It's the definition phase. And then also when you start uh doing the first sketches, discussing with your customer what is really requested, what is the priority and so on. And later on, you have the design phase that uh in my opinion, here is when you have all the different technical discussions with the potential suppliers, okay? And then after the award, when you enter in execution, is to me the typical negotiation phase when you are or you have already selected what could be the potential supplier for the project, then you are more focused on the execution consequently to deliver parts, okay? And then here, so you can discuss, you have to qualify parts, so on and so on. I put here some dates, okay? Typically, uh uh this time, uh the definition phase or the uh design phase could take six, one year is typical, okay? And then for the execution, uh right now, we are between one year, maximum two years for that. This um uh slide, what I wanted also to highlight is that for this uh project framework, uh what you use to capture are the and these key scoring parameters that later on will fit the selection panel. On one hand, you have the component cost, of course, okay? But you have other aspects such as the supplier qualification, okay? That is typically the procurement process, you have to evaluate what are the financials, the capabilities at the end of your potential supplier, as well as the logistics. For logistics, let me also highlight this because of more and more is becoming more important in the sense that given the regulations that are affecting the CO2 footprint, okay? So sometimes, one for the decision is important to consider where is your potential supplier and how is the the traffic or how you are acquiring these components, from which part of the world, so on and so on, okay? So this is about the the projects or environment. And then what is also important is to uh define as 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 much as possible your application, okay? Application here is about the product. So uh to me, in this stage, which is at the very beginning of the of the RFI or RFQ phase, or let's say when you are start engaging with your potential uh business, then what you should do here is to intensify the discussions and qualifications to understand what is really requested, okay? So the goal at the end is to have a clear product description or specification because of later on, this is impacting the complete, not only quotation, but also design and also the execution. To me, what is important for this uh product specification, okay? Is to understand not only what the product is intended to do, okay? But how this is interfacing with the rest of the of the system, okay? Again, going back to the automotive world. So uh it's clear to have a clear identification of the system interfaces in the sense that what is at the end, uh the main function that this product should fulfill inside the car, not only at electrical level, but also mechanical integration, uh how this is expected to be operated. It's important to understand what are the the physical, what is the physical environment, okay? Temperature profiles, height, uh waterproofness, so on and so on. And very important also, uh the mission profile for that, okay? Mission profile in the sense of amount of hours. This is also key for when selecting the right magnetic, okay? The right product. Then to understand what are the logical functions. Also here, to remark, no, it's not only what the product should do, but also what it should not do, okay? It's important also to understand the limits on what you are designing, okay? So electrical requirements, as I mentioned, all these uh attributes should be captured properly in the product uh specification, okay? Mechanical, as I mentioned, if there are some safety requirements, sustainability and so on. So basically, what uh at this stage, what you should uh take as an outcome or main outcome is have enough robust system specification that you could uh be entitled to discuss with your final customer, okay? And what is important also is to have uh visibility for or enough quality for the specification in order to be later on decomposed in the subsystems and the respective interfaces. Why this is key? Because of at the end, the magnetic is part of a subsystem, which is typically called a power plant, okay? And here, the better you describe at high level and the uh relations, interactions and so on, where with the respective uh environment, the better, okay? Important also to mention that this specification should be written considering what is gonna be the the testing strategy behind, okay? Uh, a common mistake is to uh start writing things that later on will not be possible to be tested, okay? It's also a good lesson learned for that. And also uh uh together with the uh this product specification, it's important to have the product architecture, okay? So out of this, once you have this uh artifacts or work products more or less ready, okay? You should be in conditions of uh ranking what is the the complexity behind or the novelty, the innovation required for fulfilling the product, okay? When discussing about the magnetic later on, it's key that uh sometimes uh when judging this uh specification or product request from your OEM, you realize what is really the scope. If they are asking for something almost aligned with the current state of the art, that perhaps you finally could select some uh already available magnetic, so a off-the-shelf solution, or they are really requesting for a high-tech product, okay? It's a deciding what is gonna be the technology in place at the end. But again, this is the the product specification and the mission here is finally to be able to to derive into the magnetic specification, okay? So moving forward, after once we have already the the product specification, the product architecture, the topology and layout, okay? We entered in the product design phase. And uh I uh I was preparing this slide basically just collecting uh feedback or lessons learned from the past because of uh in some of the cases and some organizations, what I seen is that people is uh selecting or how to say, um selecting the the component or the magnetic in the same way that they are selecting a transistor, okay? And to me, up to now, uh the magnetic design or the the magnetic component is at the head of the of the product, as I'm reading here, okay? Because of basically, uh it's much more complex than acquiring a semiconductor or a microcontroller and so on because of uh is uh is having a lot of interrelations. Basically, because of it's not only a matter of specifying or designing or selecting electrical properties, but it's about how you are integrating mechanically, uh how it's behaving in terms or how it will behave in terms of EMC, thermal, what is the size, so on and so on, okay? So to me, many people is underestimating what is the right magnetic selection, okay? Uh, so in the past, it was uh more focused on the topology itself, on the type of control and so on. But today, the most critical part is uh in regards to the magnetic selection. So magnetic, when we discuss about magnetics, is not only the power transformer, the inductors, okay? I'm also considering here the the chokes, all the uh components that uh will help you to pass the EMC testing, that, okay? So this is one bullet. Another one, very important for securing the success, is the simulation, okay? I use here the common used word shift left, okay, in terms of simulation. So what is also a good practice is to have a good simulation environment, not only for testing your power conversion, I'm not talking about the Mala Simulink, but a good model for the uh magnetic that could be integrated together with your uh power electronics, okay? And if possible, also uh connecting with the mechanical design so that you can have a trusted model that later on you will extract thermal losses uh mechanical properties on that, okay? Another important bullet, mechanical integration, in the sense that, uh as I said, no? It's not a matter of uh after writing the specification on the block diagram, just deciding the topology and later on, the components will come, wrong. So consider that uh when you have a request or the a product specification, the most critical now is the size, the mechanical aspects that your customer is requesting, okay? So starting with the morphology or the layout of the product you have to build, mechanical integration is key in the sense that it will define how much space you could have for uh including or integrating your parts. And in here, the magnetic plays a key role. So magnetics at the end, when you have a best practice, isn't it? So when you have the the environment uh conditions for the uh from your product specification, okay? You have to decide what is the right power flow, okay? So once you have what are the input-output connections for your product, okay? That are basically defining what is gonna be the the most suitable power flow here, okay? Then you have to start considering how would be this uh magnetic and uh what is the best approach in order to design your power plant. Magnetic, because of most of the times, is gonna be a custom part, it uh introduces to you uh some uh degree of freedom when designing in the sense that you could also uh play with the magnetic for improving the uh integration properties, okay? So what I'm writing here is that it's not uh just a unique solution of placing a magnetic or a power transformer, but you have you can play also, for instance, with the connections, okay? Connections for the magnetics are critical in the sense that sometimes if the sign is not properly done, so you could have hot spots or inefficient or losses for that, okay? Then another point is in is about the thermal attachment, how you are gonna solve the power losses for that, okay? How you are shielding your magnetic element and so on and so on. So the mechanical integration is uh the same important, at the same important level as the electrical sign, okay? And uh what I can tell you is that here, the different disciplines that are designing the product much uh much work together, okay? Most of the times, which is the other point, the mechanical integration is defining the technology that you could have in place. So you could have a different morphologies for your magnetic, flag wires, uh leads, banner solutions, every type of core and so on. So in here, uh you have the flexibility, but also you have the constraints given by the mechanical integration, okay? So it's also a hot topic that is uh most of the cases don't do it the same phase, okay? Also, another uh comment here, no, is about the ITs, intellectual properties, that the technology you are selecting could uh put some penalty on your cost model. It's also interesting. And also last one, not least, is also important that something I've seen in many designs is that uh because of you could have different magnetic parts inside, so you could have the chokes, the EMC filters, the inductors and so on, and you try to reuse and to have different suppliers in place and so on, that typically leads into a nightmare for your manufacturing. So uh it's also a good practice to try to harmonize. When I say harmonize, it's all the technology, isn't it? So that you could have, for instance, the same type of potting materials, the same type of attachments to the housing and so on and so on. In this uh design phase, is where the supplier engagement happens. Supplier engagement in the sense of interaction with the potential suppliers you could have, okay? And here, your engineering units are used to uh provide feedback in regards to how the supplier is uh answering to your questions, what are the uh different proposals you are collecting and so on. This is also an important uh key parameter that later on should be considered in the selection matrix, okay? So I'm sorry for speeding up. Later on, we will have uh time for answering questions, but let me quickly.
Five more minutes, Rafa?
Perfectly. So I'm I'm on time, I'm on time, thank you. So finally, this is the uh what uh we are looking for and we stayed at the very beginning of the presentation, isn't it? So what is the objective of the uh supplier selection matrix? So at the end, what we are looking for is uh to decapel what is the engineering or the technical discussions versus the commercial aspects. In a big organization, typically, so you have to satisfy or to provide uh specification sheets or component specifications to your procurement department in in the sense that they can deal commercial negotiations in parallel to the design phase. So here, what I'm dividing here are two different work products. So on one hand, we have the component specifications that are provided by the engineering that are basically coming from the uh different requirements or the subset of requirements that are coming from the product specification and uh describe how the part we are requesting should fit, okay? And in here, basically, we will have the same attributes that uh the product specification is including, so sustainability, electrical, mechanical, whatever. And also important, uh requirements that finally can be tested, okay? It's uh and let me highlight this because of it's always a source of issues and discussions with the potential supplier, how this is uh understood, how the magnetic should be tested, but I'm afraid that this is something we could cover in a in another webinar. And also, we have the supplier panel selection that is uh you said mainly by by procurement, okay? This uh supplier panel selection is typically an evaluation sheet that is uh including all the KPIs that were defined from project framework, but also from design, okay? Uh, weighted in the sense that depending on the project scope. So uh cost, for instance, could be uh weighted to the maximum, but in a different time because of reusability or whatever, you are prioritizing sampling time or whatever, okay? So here, I was listing some of the the typical uh KPIs that are used for building this matrix. So we have here cost, the sampling time, the quality that we are expecting for the part, if there are some. If there are some deviations that the supplier is proposing to your original specification. How the response of the supplier is evaluated and so on and so on, okay? What is also important and is one of the hardest statements here, okay? This is something that is not done once per project and that's all, okay? It's something that has to be synchronized with the project or the product life cycle in the sense that should be maintained, okay? And this is also another escape point that I've seen in many different organizations. Which is basically consisting on, once the supplier panel is released, okay? So we left purchasing department to do their job. And we are not discussing with them until problem arise, okay? Once we have issues because of there are misunderstandings or the project itself took some different decisions and whatever. And we are in troubles on that, okay? So it's important that there is some coordination set from the beginning on the supplier selection. And this is typically owned by engineering together with purchasing. To be sure that the supplier selection and so on, everything is well coordinated. I put here a couple of sentences, okay? Notice that there is not, and this is also by experience. There is not a magnetic supplier that could cover all the different parts that you could need. It's common to have specific panels depending on the, on the type of circuit, the type, the amount of power you have to handle and so on. And also another message important is that there are many magnetic suppliers and because of the nature, okay? As I said, this is, these are custom parts, so it's always a good practice to have a backup solution for the same part, okay? So let me quickly go to the last slide with the summary, okay? To me, I was also here selecting what are the key messages I wanted to share with you. Starting with the first, okay, so Elise, that's Yama at the beginning, is not only a matter of course. There are other selection bullets that must be considered, okay? Second thing is, and also the mistake I was sharing with you. It's not like selecting a transistor or a mosfet, it's something much more complex, okay? And in here, because of the nature, this design integration opportunities that the magnetic component offers. Could also set the difference between you and your competition, okay? So to me, it's very important to explore different integration aspects. I mentioned here some of them, okay, but interactions with your housing, your connection system, the potting strategy. Is a lot of things that can be done with the magnetic. Second or third ballot, bullet, important to say that the supplier is not static. In the sense that and it has to do with the synchronization with the project and the product life cycle. And it's also not unique, okay? And now even in this world with the different geopolitical conflicts and tariffs and so on. So it's always, it's always good to have a backup, okay? Finally, just to comment that, and this is also a trend on the AI, the emerging tools and so on. So all these tools and trends can be also explored for the magnetic selection. And some are tools that could accelerate your selection process, okay? There are, I've seen some of them, I believe it's promising, okay? But I would say that it's something that you have to combine always with your criteria, human criteria. And well, that was more or less, sorry for being perhaps so fast, it's highly concentrated, so thanks a lot.
Thank you, Rafa, perfect timing.
Thank you, Rafa, yeah, super thanks. So just a few words about Rafa for the people that have joined us a little bit later, so. So Rafa is a really super expert in, in working with supplier of magnetics. And actually, he has a very good intuition in finding talent or finding kind of. Good suppliers in rare places. I remember once that I was talking to him and he was excited because he have met a lot of new Korean. Materials manufacturers of nano crystalline and also ferroites. And that was like maybe eight or 10 years ago. But he was like discovering new suppliers of materials in Korea. Because that could be giving kind of a push to the product. So I think that he has been always trying to do that. And, and the other thing is like, I want to say thank you to Rafa because he was the one of. Actually, he was one of the first big, say, customers that gave magnetic an opportunity. And without his support, we haven't been here. So thank you very much, Rafa, I mean, I really appreciate your support, especially in the first two, three years. And we keep working together, so now in the round table, I don't want to start with the questions. I have a bunch of questions here, but I'm going to wait for the round table, so thank you much, Rafa.
Thank you, Chema, Ellie.
Thank you. Okay, let's go with the second presentation with MB Electronics, but before that, Chema. I think together, we can announce something that we are very happy to serve with everybody. Let me say something, I don't know if you want to start speaking a little bit.
Once you say it's going to be much easier for everybody to understand.
Yeah, yeah, better one bit than a lot of words.
Okay, at least I have the microphone, but I cannot switch off on my camera, did you block something?
We can hear you perfectly.
Yeah, that's good, but did you switch off the camera?
Uh, no.
Do you see us? Do you see my dogs?
Yeah, we can, we can see you perfectly.
Okay, so you can't see the dogs, you see us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, then it's good, because I don't see my picture, why ever?
Okay.
Don't worry about it.
Everybody can see you and, and we are happy to announce that from now on. MB Electronics and Frannetic has a partnership. To work together in DACH Europe region, maybe Chema you want to add more information about it?
No, we are super happy to announce, I think we can, people cannot see this slide, so. So we are super happy to announce that now MB Electronics is also a partner of magnetic and we are a partner of MB. Especially in the DACH region, so if you are looking for support on design magnetics. And also interested in using some of our platforms and technologies. Our new partner MB will be a lot of support. And I have to say that especially, say, the team of MB have been using our technology for years. And, and the nature of this relation is very natural. Because it's like they have been using our technology, they love it, and they say like, hey, why don't we make business together? So we are super happy about that. I don't want to just make this the main topic of today because they have a presentation. I'm sure that the people is here to listen what they are going to say. But I think that it was a good moment to make this announcement and we will serve also by email more information. But thank you very much, the team of MB, we are super excited about the Sartre this collaboration and yeah, let's go for it.
Okay.
Okay. So if I can, I think I should use this. You see the presentation?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, for me, it's a bit puzzling because I don't see the presentation, now I see it on my laptop, okay? Let's see if I can do something on it.
I have the mouse, can you tell that I'm not showing, this is blue. No, you see this.
So now I see the presentation. Good, yeah, thank you for the introduction. Indeed, it is more or less brand new that we are partners now for the DACH region to promote your product. And yeah, so far, what we've seen from your product and I think my colleague Florian is very advanced in using it. And he really likes to work with your product, he's very often using it. And I look forward for, to a very good cooperation here. I think my presentation is a bit more technical. What we've seen from Rafael is a general procedure, a process, how to select. And it was very, very interesting, I got one sentence, you have a new presentation. Magnetics is a heart of product performance. If we see this, then I would say soft magnetic core materials are kind of part of inductive components. So we now go into the motor room of inductors. And try to maybe take away a little bit the dust out of it. Because we see so many soft magnetic materials and we see so many people just don't see. In Germany, we have this saying, we don't see the trees but the forest. I think this perfectly says it, so I, the motivation is just one for to say why we are here, why we, why we do this, why we do this presentation. Then I want to first have a look at applications for soft magnetic cores, the main applications, inductors, transformers. To sort out and to filter out what is, what is necessary, what do we need to take care of? In order to have a good working component. And to derive with some typical characteristics out of it. Before we jump into the core materials. I will also give a brief overview of what are the different mechanical characteristics based on the production method. And then going into electrical, magnetic properties and selection criterias. Okay, let's start. Motivation. Chema, when you, when we spoke together and you said you can take, you can be part of this event. I was a bit, hmm, what can I say, what can we do? And you asked me, what are you specialist in? And I said, we are specialists in translating the need of inductors into the proper core material. So this is the motivation. And maybe all people using Frannetic, they think about that kind of tool like a, like a kind of a machine. Where you, you put in your problem on the top and you get out your solution. Maybe you put in some coins as well and then you get out your solution. It's not that simple, I think to, to, to know what you do. And to use the Frannetic tool in a, in a, in a really very effective and proper way. You need to understand some basic properties of soft magnetic core materials as well. They are at the heart of inductive components. And otherwise, you might end up with what we see very often in the field. We use ferrite because we always use ferrite or something like that. So, okay. What kind of applications do we have? Forgive me that this is not a working construction. It is just to show some basic blocks of what we see in a typical transformer inverter. And yeah, back boost is not shown there, but we also have this kind of topologies. In principle, we have kind of an EMI filter or an input filter where we go, where we come from the mains or from some kind of input. Then we have an inverter, we have some transformers, we have a back boost technology, sorry, topology. And at the end, we have an output filter. And in all these different stages, you see inductive components. And if I look into what have, we typically, we see. Common mode chokes, common mode filter chokes, we see differential mode chokes. Also EMI chokes are differential, differential mode chokes. We see back boost chokes, we see PFC chokes, resonant chokes. We see output inductors, which is another type of choke and AC choke. And we have mainly the two converter types, forward converters and flyback converters. Forward converters, they directly transform the energy from input to output. Flyback transformers typically store the energy first and then in the second step, they give it out on the output side again. So this is what we normally always bump into, there are certainly some specialties. But let's go and stay with this basic inductive components. And if I somehow, you know, saw them and go to some very, very basic characteristics. Then what we see for an EMI filter choke, I mean, the differential mode EMI filter chokes. Inductance medium may be high, power loss is, if we look for impedance, power loss can be high. Which is an exception amongst all the others. Then we have the wide field of DC chokes, it can be back boost topologies. It can be the output choke of something where you have a DC output. The DC choke typically has a medium inductance, the power loss should be low. In fact, for the other type of products, they are more important, this is why I put medium here. And what is their job, their job is mainly to store energy in a, in a, in a, in a switching topology. Then we have on the output side of the whole thing, we have an AC choke, sometimes. Sometimes it's finance filter choke, whatever kind of AC choke. And also on the input side, if we need a PFC stage, and most times we have it, then we have a PFC choke. Here, the inductance is typically higher than for the normal DC choke. And because of, normally a higher ripple, the losses should be certainly rather low. But again, we have to store energy. We have a resonance showband for all the resonant topologies in today's world, very often we, resonant topologies are used. Inductance medium power losses have to be low because, what I've put here somehow in brackets, they have kind of a 100% ripple. So at the end of the day, the whole, the whole switching cycle goes through this resonance choke. And very important not to have a problem with the resonance frequency. The inductance should be, yeah, should be linear. Then our two types of transformers, I already said, the flyback transformer stores the energy in the first. In the first cycle of the, of the, of the switch. It stores the energy in the core and then in the second stage, it gives it out on the output side. So we have two things store and transform energy. Whereas a forward transformer type typically transforms the energy directly, no storage, energy storage in the transformer. Needs a high inductance and low power loss, both of them. Common mode choke, a filter choke where the, the, the normal field is compensated. So losses are not really important. Here you look for high permeability, here you look for a high inductance. And then at the end, a high impedance mainly driven by inductance. Now, and that's basically, and I can stop because that's the translation into the core. At the end, we've seen three main things in the table before. One is store our energy, the other is losses typically, they should be lower. And we have the inductance itself. So how do we translate this into a, into a core material? And what I did here is I just gave you the basic formulas for the, for the, for. Let's go with storage energy, the storage energy, what you store in the core. Is basically belonging to the volume itself, the volume of the component. But the two magnetic parts are the flux density, the saturation flux density is a limiting factor. And the permeability, and what you see here is why we say we store the energy in air. Because the lower the permeability, the more energy you can store in principle. Whereas the saturation. Whereas the saturation limits the flux density. And this is typically, there is a limit around 2 Tesla. I don't know practical usable materials with a higher saturation out in the field. So these are the two things we have to consider when we look at the cores. Losses and impedance. Yeah, that's basically, yeah, you see the inductance. Inductance is permeability, we come to it below. And on the other side, you see the part where you have the copper loss and the iron loss, the loss in the core. And again, here typically the losses should be low. If we need a high impedance or filter choke, it can be a little bit of a difference, but typically it should be low. And then inductance, inductance is a linear relationship to permeability and some mechanical or dimensional considerations. So these are the highlighted ones are basically the things we have to take care of when we look into the, just into the core materials. And this is what we now do, we look into cores. First, a few words about the production, of course. We know ferrites, they are well known in the field. Ferrite is a ceramic, it's an industrial ceramic. That means it's sintered, you have a powder, you press it in shape, then you sinter it. And during the sintering process, a lot of filler material gases out. So there's a big shrink during this production process, 15% easily. And this means that it's very difficult to have very, very narrow tolerances in the pressed cores. This is definitely one of the things. On the other side, ceramics are very, very hard. They are very stable against pressure. You can't bend them, but yeah, that's what you have. Typically known for high variety of shapes. And then we have amorphous and nano crystalline tape cores. Extremely thin tape produced using a rapid cooldown process. They are kind of frozen metals. That's why they have a kind of amorphous structure of the molecules. And that makes them so soft magnetic, yeah, so good for soft magnetics. One result is that you have rather low losses. A drawback is you have to do something with the tape. So the shape of the cores is a windable basic shape. A torrid can be rectangular. You can do cut cores out of the rectangular, you can do e cores. And in the last years, you also see laminated blocks. But again, you have to cut the tape or break it into certain shape. You are limited, you can't do everything. Typically high permeabilities if you don't have an air gap. And for nano crystalline, it's really low loss. And then we come to an unknown field. I would say for many people, they don't like the power cores because they are nonlinear. They are somewhat, how do I design it? It's, they are strange animals. Anyway, we have iron powder cores. Maybe the oldest ones of the powder cores are iron powder cores. It's an iron based, normally an iron based powder mixed with binder. And I always say this is kind of, you know, like playing in the sand. You have water, this is the binder, you have sand, these are the powder grains. And then you have a form and you put it in a form and then this is your core. So at the end of the day, the only difference is that this binder is kind of a glue. But it is done in a similar process. We have low permeabilities by nature because we have a distributed air gap. You have a lot of millions of air gaps in the cores. You have no shrinking, so the tolerances are better than this ferrite. And also a wide variety of shapes. But be careful, there can be a thermal aging when the organic binder gases are at higher temperatures. And the other group of powder cores is alloy powder cores. I hate the name alloy powder cores. In the past it was MPP sand dust, high flux. But now we have so many other powders added to it that they looked for a group name, which is alloy powder cores. They are reduced similar to iron powder cores, also a pressing process. But the powder grains itself, they have an oxide surface. So when you press them together, it's not only a binder holding them together. It's also that these oxide surfaces somehow goes into each other and makes it quite hard. You need higher pressing pressures. You're limited a little bit in the variety of shapes. On the other side, you don't have a thermal aging because the magnetic inactive oxide surface still keeps this distributed air gap so light. Okay. You see why I use the colors to somehow, forgive me that I use here material names of our partners. We are distributors or partner for DNGC ferrites and micrometals powder cores. So I use their product names. But at the end, it's exchangeable to most of the other materials on the market. So this is a comparison of the typical properties of soft magnetic materials. And what we've seen in the translation table is we have to look, if we want to have a one to store energy, we have to look at saturation. And you see the saturation has a wide variety for all the materials. It's one of the drawbacks of ferrite. They have a quite low saturation with 400, 500 milli Tesla. Then there is a group of materials typically sand dust is in the range of 0.8, 0.9 Tesla. So they are medium. And most of the other materials are significantly higher in saturation than one Tesla. So they offer you an even elevated level of theoretical possibility to store energy. In contrary, or the second indication, what is always important is losses. Here is just the other way around. Ferrite is at the low end. We compare here a value of 50 kiloats, 100 milli Tesla drive level. We use this because for most of the materials, this is, it turned out to be standard to compare materials. It's somewhere out of the air, but it gives a feeling. And what you see here is that ferrite and nano crystalline is really at the low end. And this is the big drawback of iron powder. It is the standard cheap iron powder is at the high end of this stage. So yeah, and this is the field where you have to play and where you need to trade off somehow.
Okay, four more minutes for the presentation.
Okay, no problem. I leave out the cost factor, it is just addressing something we learned, it's not so important. Okay, one thing here regarding, here I put a pure technical consideration, which shows saturation on one side and losses on the other side, losses the other way around. So low losses are good and high saturation is good. The intention is that the upper right corner is the holy grail. What we see is that we have ferrites and nano at a low loss level with saturation, what we already said with the ferrites. This is then typically in the transformer range where you need low losses. We have a wide variety of powder cores and the blue ones are the alloy powder cores. Here in this medium loss range. And we see the drawback of iron powder. They have a high saturation, but they are in the high loss range. Be careful, as this is not linear. The factor between here and here is already a factor of 10 and another factor of 10 here as well. So hey, it's, we have significant differences. To come back to the cost level and what to choose now. I would say, because cost has an effect. I put here a cost factor versus losses. And you end up with some materials down here. Down here is the cheaper materials. And this is the playground where you can select core materials off when you look at losses. And you can do the same thing at the end with saturation. You end up certainly down here are the same materials, maybe in another order. But what you can see is you have, regarding costs, you have a variety of materials at moderate cost, which can do the job. And materials like high flux nano OC OD, which are kind of nickel containing materials. They are really extremely expensive. And as such, I would always recommend to start with this type of materials when you go into your design. And only if you can't find a solution here, you go up and try to, you know, find a solution in these materials. I would say we can use this as kind of the last foil. I took the table we saw before. And now I tried to, you know, sort some materials to the different applications. And this is basically derived from the three graphs we saw before. EMI filter chokes, they don't have a high, they can accept high losses. So iron powder is maybe a good choice here. They give you some higher impedance. They are rather cheap and it works out from all considerations. If you go to DC chokes, back boost, iron powder still plays a role, but it moves more into sand dust and ferrite with gap due to some lower losses. AC PFC choke, this is basically the game changer. Here you just work with alloy powder cores. Ferrite with gap is always an option. Sometimes amorphous cut cores, but be careful, they can be noisy in the wrong frequency range. And yeah, anyway, they have a high saturation, which makes them really usable. Resonant chokes is difficult. Ferrite would need a large gap, creating a lot of losses. Mix two is very linear, moderate losses, low perm. You can use a sand dust, even lower losses, but it should be low perm to have a linear inductance. Resonant choke is really, really, maybe sometimes a tricky one. Flyback and forward type transformers typically go into the ferrite direction. Powder cores in the flyback would be possible, but typically have too high losses. So you go to a ferrite. And with forward type transformers, completely wrong material, you need high permeability. And they are out of discussion then. And common mode chokes need high permeability. So at the end, ferrite nano crystalline is, yeah, state of the, state of the choice.
Okay. We already have time. Don't know if you have more slides, but we can save the rest of them for maybe the round table or the questions part.
Well, I have some more slides, but one is just a marketing for you, you know? We tried to use your program to calculate whatever PFC type of choke. And we proved that we found out in amorphous core, ferrite core, and the sand dust core. And at the end, the sand dust might be in a total cost, the best one.
Let's do, let's do one thing. Let's keep this slide for then. Because I think it's the turn of triomagnetic. And I think it could be interesting to start with the round table now with everybody. So we can keep the time. And Kima, I think we can start with some interesting questions and to see the point of view of a big manufacturer as triomagnetic. Because I know Laffaro, maybe you have to leave the webinar in 10 minutes approx. So we would like to know your point of view about all these presentations.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Oh, Jemma, right?
No, I wanted to introduce you. So Laffaro, that is a kind of expert, also user in Frannetic. He had been using our channel for four years now, I think. And he's based in LA. And I mean, let's say, I have been visiting their facilities and they have an amazing team in LA for building samples for medium, low frequency and also very high frequency transformers and inductors. So welcome to the round table, Laffaro.
Thank you.
So we know that he is going to leave soon. So I'm going to launch, let's say, a general question to everybody. And then you can kind of give your main, let's say, your opinion, let's say. It's a very general question about the process of how the people choose the magnetic suppliers. So something that Rafa said, that is about the process and also the team of MB, they talked about the materials. But I want to ask you something that is more personal, or let's say more focused on the persons. Who is the decision maker in the selection of the supplier? Once, I mean, Rafa, you choose this, you explain the process. There are like, you are working with maybe five different suppliers. There is a moment where maybe two or three are very, very similar. So who is taking that decision and how? From the perspective of Rafa, from the perspective of MB and from the perspective of manufacturer, what do you think or what is your experience? Try to, let's try to do this round table with kind of answers of 20 seconds max. So we can be like a very, very easygoing. Who wants to start? Rafa?
In terms of selection, Kemma.
I can.
Okay.
I can say my perspective. I mean, I know that, you know, it normally, I guess it starts with engineering typically, right? But then at some point it gets handed over to purchasing. And normally purchasing is the one that, you know, they want things done like right away, right? So normally, at that point, it's almost like a timing thing. So if you can get, you know, can normally, they're also trying to get a quote from RFQs from multiple suppliers. And our experience has been that whoever responds to the purchasing person the quickest is normally the one that has a higher opportunity of getting, you know, getting the business. So, I mean, we like to think that we're not in a like super, you know, fast-paced business. But when it comes to responding to requests or quotes, it does seem like that, right? So basically, whoever responds for is, has the highest opportunity of gaining the business. So that's been like my experience for, you know, for 20 years.
Thank you. So basically, Laffaro is saying, purchase people, once the final decision is very, very, the weight of the purchase people is very, very important. And the time to respond to the questions or requests is also critical. So Rafa?
Yeah, it's really simple, eh? In all my experience, so engineering assesses that the supplier is providing a solution with no blockers. Okay, so that the technical proposal is fitting on the final product. But at the end, purchasing is having the last sentence, basically because they are liable in front of manufacturing. Okay, so they are the responsible, so the owners of the decision for assigning a project. This is always like that. It's not only for magnetic, it's for all the different components that are assembled. It's liability at the end, so.
Jan and Keiko, you are muted, by the way.
You're, you are mute?
Uh, you're mute. Uh, uh, Jan, you are mute. Uh, we cannot hear you. On the top, right, probably?
Okay, now you can hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Sorry. Um, no, my, I I would agree in general if we look at uh, medium and bigger sized companies, the bigger a company, the more um, the purchasing has the last word. Um, in the smaller to medium sized customers we have, we find a good number of customers very technically driven. It can be that they are founded by a technical guy and that this technical guy still holds more or less control of everything. Um, then you definitely uh, have to convince them from a technical standpoint and you have to bring a technical value to them. And if they, if they understand that you you are also from a technical side, a a a very good partner, then they want to do the business with you as well. But the bigger the company, I must say, the more um, uh, the less purchasing and uh, tech- technical department talk together. Uh, the more I have the feeling they both are 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 sometimes placed even against each other. And uh, and in this case, it's it's really a bad situation for us. Because then we have to to fiddle out who at the end is the stronger one. And purchasers don't like it. I tell you purchasers don't like it if a technology designs something and they don't have a choice. They have to use your, uh, they have to use you and they don't have really a choice where to play around. They they, you have to address this, you have to give them the feeling as well, the purchasing department the feeling as well, that they uh, bring some value to the, to the, to the discussion, to the selection. So I tell you, okay, we typically see the start of a project in the technology department. But um, at a certain stage, it's handed over to purchasing. And my experience is the the earlier you get in touch with the purchasing people, the the bigger is the chance that you get uh, the business.
For the classic to winding houses, perhaps a little bit different, and you have one, the head of the company is the decision maker in the end, and you are mostly in touch with them.
These guys are married with one supplier. They 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 don't change. They they did it for ages and they are married.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, I think it's really helpful. So before Laffaro leaves, I want to ask you uh, something that can be later extend to the rest of the participants. So um, you and me have been talking sometimes that you receive requests from customers that in some cases even they are bringing with, let's say, a material selection or something. So they already want to participate in part of the design process. Um, but this is not always a good thing, or let's say, this is sometimes a even a problem. So how do you deal with this? So when you get a customer request, but they are bringing with half of the design?
Yeah, it's, I would say it's it's challenging, right? It's it's easier for as as a magnetic designer to be able to start, start from scratch. And you, you know, you have a blank slate and you can choose the materials that you find are best fit for the application, right? So um, but yeah, when when customers come in already with very specific requirements and down to the materials, i- i- it is, it is a little bit challenging because now you're trying to not only do your job at um, coming up with the magnetic solution, but you're also trying to do a job of convincing the customer that maybe his decisions may not be optimal, right? So I think it's it's um, it is challenging. I mean, it it's interesting, you know, from one perspective, but it's also challenging because yeah, you're you're trying to convince customers, you know, that they they may be wrong. And and that's always like a, um, you know, a difficult uh, conversation to have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what I was looking for in your answer. So um, so the rest of the participant, well, how do you see this? I mean, Rafa use are more, have been more from the side of the customer. Um, and and MB, you have been more, uh, let's say, dealing with customers like Laffaro. So uh, what's your perspective? Um, I don't know, Rafa?
Well, I've, I've tried with these strategies, okay, of creating a sort of B two B spec to the supplier and then because of I I can have a bigger uh, control or a better control, okay, on the on the cost model for the supplier. So yes, it's a practice. Even I've been even supplying golden parts to some of the potential suppliers, okay? It's also another possibility. It's a matter of squeezing the cost and the margins for the supplier. Okay, in the other hand, you are cutting the innovation or the proposals from the magnetic suppliers. So you are losing here some push for the, for having an innovative solution. But yes, both options are are possible, yeah.
MB team?
Um, I would like to throw one additional point into the discussion here. For us, it's even more complex because we, if we speak about sales of uh, soft magnetic cores, we speak with a winding house. And uh, a winding house, some of the, some of the winding houses do the design, have the design uh, in their hands. They do the design themselves. But very often we have the situation that the this, that the winding house is just doing uh, the production for an OEM behind. And so the design is originated by an OEM, at at an OEM. Uh, they uh, ask a winding house to do it. The winding house comes to us with a, with a given solution. And then we come out and say, hey, why, why is that? Uh, we we will have different ideas maybe to optimize the thing. Uh, but we cannot speak to the winding house and the winding house is not letting us through to the OEM. And uh, this makes it even more complex in 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 the role we play to 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 really, you know, come in a technical discussion. Whereas I see the points of Rafa and I fully agree, uh, the technology, the technical solution may be uh, also the commercial uh, optimized solution for the inductive component is only just one aspect in a, in a complex scenario of different points. And um, if an OEM at the end lets uh, let everybody uh, in in they ask, come back with uh, with their own conclusion, uh, it might end up in in a mess of different uh, solutions. And this is also no way to go forward. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, it's a great point. Um, and it's a great point. Um, and and related with this, what, how? I mean, Rafa explained that usually in a, in a system, you have like uh, maybe five or six, just not one magnetic, like five or six. So um, and also Rafa mentioned like, hey, you have the material, let's say, or a better price for the material. The the even the customer can bring the material to the supplier. But how common is to have several components of the same customer? Because usually the projects are, yeah, I have a transformer, but a transformer is never alone. So you always have an EMI or a common choke. How common is that uh, the customer puts several magnetics uh, together? Or how common for you is that actually you separate that? Because it's actually a lot of work if you have five magnetics and have five suppliers, no?
Absolutely. Let me answer this. Yeah. It's a nightmare. It's not only for your design and the management of the supply, different suppliers, but also, as I said, for the manufacturing, okay? Because of you should, for instance, uh, integrate all those magnetics coming from different fathers and mothers in the same core plate, okay? And then it's difficult to harmonize the type of glue or eh, how to do the potting, for instance, if you are getting uh, different technologies, materials. So it's a good practice more and more to try to have the eh, everything coming from a same, same supplier. That's the reality. But unfortunately, this is not really possible, okay? Because of specialization in the magnetic world is is huge. You can find specialists, they're developing toroids and others that are just developing eh, transformers. And that's life, it's difficult.
Uh, so the specialization, this is very interesting. And before Laffaro leaves, um, specialization is more in, let's say, you were talking about more the winding part? Because at the end of the day, it's like a good, really made the winding house, no? Is, let's say, is the winding?
And the cores, Kema, winding, but also cu- uh, custom cores, okay? You, yeah, utilizing different shapes, which is more and more standard. I've seen really recently impressive designs, okay, that uh, two, three years ago, it was impossible. Okay, so uh, the custom cores are more and more present in the industry.
So so Laffaro, for for that specialization that Rafa is saying, what's your perspective from the winding house point of view?
Um, well, not, I mean, I, I mean, one thing I I I like to say is that I I don't have to leave, but um, um, you know, the more, the more willing the customer is of having some flexibility in terms of the design, the better it will be for them when working with the manufacturer, right? Because the manufacturer is the one that, you know, knows how to build things. So if if you allow them to be able to have some flexibility, then they'll be able to manufacture the part, you know, um, based on their own capabilities, right? So, and if they can do that, that will always result in the lowest cost of the component. So that I guess that would be my my, I guess, closing, closing point, like, I I know some customers are very, very particular about how to, you know, what, how, you know, materials and how to build the part and everything, right? So, and and to a degree that's good. We we want to have, you know, as many requirements as possible when it comes to building something because it makes it a little bit easier, because we know what you want versus, you know, we don't have to guess so much, right? But also like, just don't be too strict on that, because then, then you tire our hands. And and which then, like I said, it it makes it hard for us to be able to build something. And if it, if it's hard to build, then that's going to affect the cost of the component, right? And ultimately, if you're interested in lower cost, you have to be able to, you know, compromise. So I mean, that would be my my kind of a take when it comes to, you know, customer and 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 manufacturer relationships.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Laffaro, for being here today with us. Uh, everybody will receive in an email tomorrow also the contact detail of Laffaro and Triamagnetic. So uh, so if you are looking for a supplier in the LA area, um, I would love also to make an introduction. They also have uh, the technology of magnetic, so you can share uh, this design with them. So uh, thank you, Laffaro.
Right, thank you. Nice meeting everybody.
So we keep uh, the discussion about the, uh, because I think that, um, what you were saying, uh, Rafa, and I want to ask the team of MB about the specialization thing. Um, and you are saying that um, it it could be ideal to have one supplier for, let's say, EMI, uh, transformer, inductor, and maybe flybacks, let's say. But um, I know that Laffaro wouldn't like to say this, but of course that probably even Triad or whatever supplier, they usually have, what you were saying, Rafa, is that just most suppliers, they are kind of specialized in a type of, um, let's say, of technology, winding, whatever. So some people could be very specialized, I don't know, in flyback or in toroid. Um, um, but can we elaborate a little bit more on this? Because I think this is super interesting from the perspective of the buyer, but also from the perspective of somebody that is uh, let's say, trying to gain more market from a manufacturer perspective is.
Of course, you mentioned, it's basically a matter of of the morphology of the component. So basically, you mentioned flybacks, Kema, typical flyback, I guess, for for power supplies, isn't it? So we are talking here about fifty watts, uh, flyback, something like this, okay? It's a different animal than a power transformer of three kilowatts, for instance. So they know, they know how the type of materials, the windings for developing one solution or the other eh, lead the specialization inside the supplier, isn't it?
Hmm, that's what I'm, that's what I'm going to say, uh, and I would fully agree. Uh, in in theory, it would be great if you have, you know, just uh, one, two, maybe three suppliers and they can all deliver you the whole, the the whole variety of what you need. At the end, it will not be the case. Uh, starting from an SMD EMI choke animal, uh, going up to a uh, one hundred kilowatt transformer, uh, there is so much in between. And um, I would say, we we, when I look from from, as as a core supplier, when I look into our customer base and how they, they they distinguish themselves. And it's, it's basically from the winding technology is basically two things. It's toroids with this, um, with this uh, bobbin windings, whatever shape called windings. And it is the power ranges. And um, yeah, flat wire is is one aspect, certainly, yeah. But these are, I would say, the main things. And then you have, you can group together, but um, you you will typically find these these specialties and and specialized winding houses. And this makes it difficult to have a one-stop shop for everything. Uh, this is, everybody dreams about it, but it's it's not the case. Yeah.
Uh, even the bigger ones, so the bigger names, I don't know, Sumida, Jaguero, uh, Bizai. So this, even these big companies are not able to be a one-stop shop.
Try to get a railway transformer from Sumida. It's it's, it's, it's not there. I think Sumida is, in Sumida, at least in our territory, is very much focused on automotive uh, things. And um, keep in mind that Sumida in Germany here, the winding house, is the former Voigt. So they are fair enough, guys. Um, that means uh, already from this example, you see, they have, maybe from history, they have certain strengths. Then they can do some other things as well, okay? But um, their core, their heart is is still, uh, they 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 have a bias, you know? They 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 will always move in that direction and feel comfortable in that direction. And that's the, that's, that's the thing. On the other side, you have companies like, for railway transformers, you have companies like STS, like, I don't know. Uh, they they, they do fifty percent of their business just in this. They know exactly what is needed.
Which company you said?
Uh, SES, um, MTEX, uh, uh, Indactron, uh, whatever. They are, they are in the railway, in in the, in, they are really very deep in this railway. They know what is necessary there. Uh, they do this high-power uh, transformers. Uh, they know how to do it. On the other side, if you go to automotive, uh, you are in a different uh, volumes, you are in different volumes, you are in different power ranges, uh, and different needs. Um, and then industrial is, I would say, it's it's the easiest field of all, but it's also the widest variety of things what you can find. You you find in industrial, uh, something from the, from the industrial PC, which is more SMD type stuff, uh, up to power supplies for uh, for big machines, which can easily be in the, in the one hundred kilowatts range or or even higher. Um, so, yeah. It's, and you see, uh, you you really see a specialization of the winding houses. They serve several ma- different markets and they uh, they serve exactly what is necessary in these markets.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, let me summarize this, this discussion.
Sorry, sorry, Kema, let me add something. So the only thing I've been doing for mitigating this situation for the last years, okay, has been to uh, to try to have planar solution as much as possible, okay? So as soon as you are able to integrate planners in your design, you are just eh, buying the ferrite, the cores, the core materials and so on, you know? And then eh, you only have to care or to procure EMC chokes and this type of eh, components, okay? But flybacks, power transformers, inductors, power inductors, okay? You could try to do it by planar techn- technology, yeah.
Actually, you load the.
Sorry?
If you talk about planner, you mean you have the winding already integrated in your board or you put a planner component on?
So winding is no one included, it means you need knowledge about the magnetic design.
Yeah, exactly. Then you have to uh integrate this in your power PCB, okay? But well, for doing so, you need the space, you need the knowledge, the know-how, and so on and so on. It's not easy.
But this is, this is also a typical requirement we see very often coming from the automotive and especially e-mobility sector at the moment. Um, so again, this, yes, it's a solution, and we see a good uh rising interest in this solution, but it's really dedicated to to some special industries. Nobody in the, in the, in the machinery and uh in 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 power supply is interested in that. They they are not really ready to do it. But the automotive, hey, an onboard charger or some such things, they have to be small, flat, whatever. Um, and 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 this drives it to this, to this direction.
And for the integrated, you need all the volumes, mostly, both are expensive.
You you know one thing, and this is what I can add to the discussion before. Um, when we are discussing, discussing with winding houses, winding houses like to go for standard components in general. It is not one hundred percent, but in general, they like to go for standard components. Toroids, ECOS, whatever shapes which are known. Why? Because they want to source around in the, in the market and try to look for exchangeable products. Um, whereas as soon as you start a discussion with the OEM, with the designer of the inductor, very nowadays, very often you end up with uh custom cores, uh not only custom core shapes, also custom core materials, blends of different uh materials. So it's, then we go to highly integrated uh products. For for me, the most in- interesting products, really, also from a technology point of view, because you 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 never stop learning that.
Um, uh, you, Rafael, you brought to the table one of the topics that I have prepared for, for actually, for the next, let's say, as a next topic. So let me summarize about the previous topic, and we can jump in this planner uh discussion. So um, you, what you were saying, uh, everybody was saying is that, um, so the ideal life is that you have one-stop uh winding house, where you go and you ask for your five different types of magnetics for your system. Uh, but what is happening is that due to the background or the tradition of that company, usually they are very well specialized in a specific type of uh material and winding technology, let's say, that usually is attached, you know? If you are in ferrite, usually are more like in a type of winding. If you are in toroids, you are a different type of winding. Or if you are working in kind of uh flybacks, you are a different type of also combination of material and winding. And um and then what is happening at the end of the day is that um for big volumes, there is, let's say, a lot of work between purchasing and engineering and a lot of suppliers. So there is a huge amount of work analyzing, I don't know, twenty suppliers in total, because you have five different types of magnetics, at least two, two type of uh, two suppliers for each type. You are talking about ten or or fifteen. And and from the perspective of uh of low volume, there is a lot of use of standard components, I guess, to try to mitigate the customization, especially in everything that is not just a transformer. And and then that came out with the question about, well, one thing to simplify the work of the tier-one supplier, maybe in the automotive industry, is to bring up uh planners, because then you um kind of uh avoid the conversation with a winding house. But there's this big problem that including a one, let's say, a transformer or a planner in your PCB have a huge risk of, let's say, of performance. So you don't know if it's going to work or not, and how long it will take you. And actually, it's just in your main board. So if it's not working, you cannot call the supplier and say like, hey, the transformer is not working, send me a new one. No, the problem is in your house. Um, so let's talk about planners. Um, I think that everything that you have said there is like, MB said, that you have seen in the, in the automotive industry, a lot of kind of resonant activity on that. Um, from the frenetic perspective, I can say, we have been listening about planners since I started working on these. But every time I visit a customer, or every time I'm talking with customers, and I try to make a quantification of which percent of your magnetics today, already in product, are planners. I would say, my number that I, what I have seen probably is between five and fifteen percent of maximum, let's say, usually actually zero, but in the case where, yes, we have, usually it's five percent, ten percent. What's your experience? What what do you have seen? Because something is like, this is really good, we want to go in that direction. But the other thing is like, what is really happening in the market?
I would tell you, Chema, there are two things here, okay? One is, of course, the expertise. It's not easy to develop planners, and also these uh windings are coexisting with the rest of the electronics, isn't it? So it's even much more complex in order to uh to pass EMC, to spread the heat there, and so on and so on. But uh the most important thing is that once you have a planner designer, okay? And it's working like that, and then suddenly, and typically happens uh the Friday morning, your customer comes and says to you, hey, I need to broaden the operating range. And then you are killed, because of, you designed it with a uh a ratio between the windings. Uh, you know what I mean, it's it's not flexible solution. And this is the uh, the weakness for the planners, is that every time you have to uh re-adapt your product, say, the operating range, or the the current uh driven by the transformer or whatever, you have to redesign the complete PCB, isn't it? And redesigning means qualifying again, passing EMC testing, or a delta design validation, whatever. So it's, it's always a risk, a risk, and unfortunately, this is the main uh weakness of the planners.
Which percent? Just you have a number. Which percent would you say, in your experience, in, let's say, uh, the companies, especially the companies you have been around, at this big, let's say, automotive, which percent?
For the last, for uh uh three years, okay, for the different projects, uh, I've been trying to uh put planners everywhere. This is the reality, okay? And because of also is uh is, it's competitive, of course. So, and in production.
Percentage, let's say, you have transformers in that, so so uh in all all the potentials that could be planners, how percentage finally end up being planners uh in in their final product? More or less, that's a rough number.
Rough number, difficult to say, twenty, thirty percent, okay? For the last uh two, three years, but to me, I I've been, it's my priority, okay? If I can put a planner solution, I prefer to go with this.
And do you have, uh, do you have, or do you think that you need in-house and specialists? Or do you really, okay?
Yeah, you need a very, very good uh guy with experience, and also with know-how in developing PCBs, because it's not only the design of the windings, okay? It's also how this is connecting with your uh, with your MOSFETs and so on, it's it's complex. Assigning planners is complex.
So what about you, uh, MB? What's your opinion? What's your percentage you have seen?
I have not, I I cannot add much to to the discussion, uh, what is not already said. I would go with your numbers more than in the, it's it's more in the range five to ten percent, if I see our overall um saves. But I think it's it's difficult to compare um Rafael's uh impression with 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 our impression, as said before, we deliver the whole market. And what I see is that planners play a big role, and a bigger and bigger and bigger role, especially in all the automotive-driven, and especially e-mobility. Since e-mobility started, there was a push on planners in this technology. And this is, uh, if if you just look at this uh particular market, it might be other numbers. But all overall, um, going through all the markets, um, they still play a minor role, uh, which is five to ten percent. You also know that years ago, decades ago, twenty years, twenty-five years ago, uh, it was a big hype, not onboard, it was a big hype to have planar transformers as a, as a component uh made from planar cores. Also, this technology didn't start to fly in the whole field. It is more, um, it is more uh a specialty. It found some places where it was used, where it is used, but it also didn't start to fly across everything. Um, so at the end of the day, um, I think it is fair to say, fair to say what you say, Rafael. Um, the limiting factor is, once you want to change something, you have to change the whole uh PCB. You have to change everything. Um, and maybe this is kind of a drawback. Another thing is that uh a lot of the OEM companies don't really go deep into the magnetic components. They use a winding house. But if you use a winding house, a planner, integrated in your board, is is, how should that work? It's, yeah, that's not possible. So at the end, uh, there are some aspects, um, yeah, limiting the 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 breakthrough of this technology. Um, and uh, technology aspects are also there. I I I hardly believe that a transformer uh with a very high voltage isolation requirement and so on uh can be done as a, as a planner on a PCB with all the other components around. At a certain level, there is, there is uh, there is a limitation there. So yeah, some aspects drive into other technologies. This is what I, what I, what I have to say. And if you need a number, yes, five to ten percent, I wouldn't even go to fifteen uh as an average over all the markets. Particular markets, different.
Absolutely, the real planer cores, we said, not all of them are used really all-integrated. A lot of key planer cores are used with a flat wire, winding and something like this. So I would say the ball-integrated part of it.
That's a very special part, yes. This is what I, what I can say.
Okay, so thank you very much, just to summarize here. Um, so basically, the planners in, could be a selling solution in terms of cost-effective and also um in volumes, because you are also reducing the number of suppliers. But you need a lot of specialists inside, especially in the automotive industry. But the rest of the market is not really flying uh with uh with uh with a planner. So at the end of the day, um, these limitations of technology needs and kind of uh breeze, I guess, is also affecting. So let's move to an an another topic I have here. I'm very curious, Rafael, about something you said before. You said, I have seen lately some designs or some projects that couldn't been done before. And I'm so curious, what is, what have you seen? Or let's say, what have been the chain in the technology? Or what, why these designs have been possible? Because I guess that because of confidentiality, you cannot show the details of the design. But you can say like now, they have been using, I don't know, what what is the, what have been the the, what is happening?
The progress with the semiconductor industry, okay? So right now, it's crazy, so you you don't care on the performance of your silicon or silicon carbide or gallium nitride, isn't it? So there is no limit in terms of uh, of uh switching. So the switching elements have evolved so so much that now it looks like everything is possible. This is also combining with the uh computing performance. So also now the control is not a barrier. I remember uh ten years ago, okay, that going far away from two hundred kilohertz switching was something uh crazy, no? It was high fee, uh, high fee. Right now, there are no limitations. So the the only limitation is the magnetic at the end, isn't it? So those are the key drivers for that.
Okay, so the frequency, you said that with the increase of the frequency, there are much more other possibilities that you have seen. Um, so uh John and 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 the team of MB, uh, what have you seen recently in the last uh five years that you haven't seen before? So something that is like relatively recent, like, hey, this is kind of different from what was happening ten years ago. Maybe from the material's perspective, because also.
This is, this is, this is what I can, what I can say. Um, what we've seen in the last ten years, or in the last five, ten to ten years, is um a big move on the powder core side. On the ferrite side, we had this move maybe a decade before. Um, and what I mean is, um, the world of powder cores, especially alloy powder cores, was somehow divided into sand dust, um, NPP and high flux. And then we have uh also the silicon iron powder fluxan in our uh for 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 micro metals. Um, these were the four materials, and they were somehow set. You had um low saturation, low losses, you had high saturation, low losses, but expensive. You had um even lower losses and but low saturation at a very high price. And then you had uh silicon iron powder, which gives you high saturation, higher losses, but at a reasonable price. And this was kind of a square, and we had to live inside of it. Um, and in the last five to ten years, all the powder core manufacturers, um, they pushed the limits of the material to uh to new levels. They reduced the losses while keeping the saturation. They increased the saturation while keeping the losses. They brought up new materials there, um, addressing exactly saturation and losses this uh, the slide I I had. And to push it up to this holy grail of highest saturation, lowest losses. And the only thing they didn't reach is lowest price at this end. This is a very high-priced material. Anyway, uh, this is what was going on in the powder core industry. We had a similar move in the ferrite industry, uh, maybe uh ten years earlier. Um, before, we had this typical N sixty-seven uh from 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 Siemens or from Abos, and and three C ninety or three C ninety, whatever. Uh, and that full stop, and then suddenly, uh, they came up with new materials optimized in uh in 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 special losses at at higher temperatures, optimized in a flat loss, um, optimized in in, they they moved up with the, with the saturation uh levels uh higher than four hundred, in the range of five hundred at room temperature. Um, so we we saw this maybe ten years before, and now we see it for the powder core. Um, the bad news is, in my opinion, uh, also the powder component factors are now close to the limits what is possible. And what what can come in the future now is, um, that we fine-tune the material dedicated to the application. That means um it it, we have applications where losses are more important than saturation. Then we can tweak the material more in this this direction. Um, or the other way, or permeability, or stability of permeability. We will see uh moves there, but this is what I would call mainly fine-tuning. And this is actually what ferrites are doing right now. Ferrites right now, in the last ten years, are more on this fine-tuning area. They find a new lowest temperature, uh lowest lost temperature, and and optimize it there. Uh, whatever, but the the the, there is not much big steps. Um, what what we, what we see. What might be uh still developing is the variety of of different core shapes, the possibility to produce co- more complex shapes. I think production technology is still, um, is still moving. Um, and uh, but this is, this is what I see. Um, and what I see at the moment is still uh, is still that the 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 losses are somehow moving downwards, which addresses this uh the needs of the higher frequencies at the end.
Yeah, but if you go to higher frequencies, mostly you have to make a selection, especially in the ferrite. Yeah, or in the powder core, yeah, the history reasons losses mostly driven to lower frequency losses. And you have to high frequency losses, anti-current, micro-anti-current, and that was it. So in the end, the material is compromised, but the ratio of both losses, you can shift by the, by the, decrease the high frequency losses, you increase the history losses.
When I started in ninety-six at Vakium Schmelze, I had, I don't remember the 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 name of the guy, but one of the people training me told me, the bad news in magnetics is all, basically, all materials we can use in soft magnetics are already discovered and found fifty years ago.
I had something over the seventies, yes.
The problem is, until today, it's still true. So to, if you if you wanna expect big movers, movers in 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 performance, we would maybe need other materials. But at the moment, I don't see anything what was not already tested. And so at the end, all what we can do is is improve production, production technologies, is work on the purity of the materials, on how to, how to, you know, derive the materials, how to get them. But the materials itself, they are stable, they are already there and they are available. So you don't expect anybody will come with a double saturation in the next ten years.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I think that that was super, super interesting. Before jumping to the next question, I'm going to add, I mean, somebody put in the, the, actually, Gregory Simopoulos, I think he's a regular of our webinars. He said like, this had been a very good and interesting forum, one of the best, thank you. So thank you, Gregory, for your comment. I think that that's really appreciated for us and from the, from the speakers. And he said, just a comment for your consideration. Regarding automotive applications, I would like to say that planet transformers lend themselves to more vibration-resistant configurations. Also, when we are carrying hundreds of FAMs, the planner provides a lower profile configuration, in my humble opinion. That's what he said. I think it's quite of, quite an interesting comment. So just for closing remarks, I'm going to, I I I love to talk about future. Actually, this, I live talking about future. So so I'm, I'm going to invite you with me to in the, to close this this forum, adding what could be like a kind of vision for the future in the in the power supply related with the magnetics. Could be related with the with the production side, could be related with the technology side, or could be related with the with the market, let's say. Because as you, we have seen lately with the AI thing, AI, let's say, LLM models, the new LLM models have completely changed a lot of small industries or big industries, some cases. Because basically now you can do a specific task just with a kind of LLM model that before have been doing by a person taking a phone every day. So what could be your prediction in twenty years from now for this industry? What would be the big chain? What could you think that could be like these, our LLM models, but for the power electronic industry? What do you think that it could be a ten X? Because what you are saying is true, materials, you can optimize, you can get one, five percent, ten percent. I'm asking you, what could be a ten X chain, twenty X chain?
I asked myself the same question. If you, if you have the answer, then I buy it. Regarding, and especially, I must say, especially in the in the actual situation, the the question is, it's really very difficult to answer. We see a transformation, if if I look in the, in the non-China market, yeah, in the, in the, in the, in the Western whatever market, we see big, big changes. Besides the political changes, we see also in industry, there is a real, the the we always believe that the automotive industry will be the last mass production industry left in Europe. This in this, this is at the moment a bit questionable, because at the moment, seeing new technologies, we we have a little bit the feeling that the 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 old automotive companies in our countries run behind. It is, this war is not lost, but it will change significantly. And even if we just look at technology, a combustion engine to an electrical engine, and I'm convinced that the electrical engine will come. I think we we change, like we changed from a just mobile phone to a smartphone. It is, it is, it is an iPhone on wheels. This is what it is, an electrical car, and it is a software-defined vehicle. And this means that the technology inside, in the motor room of this engine, of this thing, is completely different to what we have today. And so I'm a bit, at the moment, I'm really a bit, I can't answer the question, what will be in ten, twenty years regarding magnetic materials? Because I don't have enough imagination, what can happen to really bring down? What we have to do is we have to bring down the losses, basically. I don't think saturation is a big issue. I think losses at the moment is the biggest issue. We have to bring down the losses to address the rising frequencies. This is what will really, in all industries, frequencies will rise, higher powers at high frequencies. And you said it, two hundred kilohertz was was idiotical twenty years ago. And today, nobody speaks about two hundred kilohertz, they they discuss megahertz. And this shows it, and I have no idea. I know we have to address it, but I have no idea what to do on the on the commodities to bring down the losses in in that range. This really needs, this is, this is where we have to work on, but don't ask me what is the, what is the click. But below the line, we will see rising frequencies, we will see higher power densities. This is what we will see, no matter of the industry, no matter of the application. In all industries, the same thing, and we have to address it, and I don't know, I don't have the answer.
Well, this is, this is an answer already, so thank you very much.
Sorry, ask me in twenty years, I'll tell you that.
So this is, this is an answer, it's a very good answer.
Application point of view, okay, what I see is that more and more the different OEMs are asking for or are converging to the same powertrain, the same power architecture and so on. So as a consequence, probably, what the, what we will see in ten, fifteen years is that we will have a sort of common power conversion structure, okay, that you can reuse and to achieve different power levels, different voltages and so on. But at the end, it's a matter of having a sort of commodity, and this is including not only the magnetic, but also the power switches and so on, that you will reuse, is how the industry has been doing for the last fifty years, okay? So this is my vision, that the trend is to harmonize and to convert to a single solution.
Just to 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 these comments, a question maybe can help us to close. Do you think that the the winding house like they are today, that at the end there are a lot of winding house, and in Europe, we have been streaking this market? So a lot of less companies, a lot of less kind of manufacturing winding house in Europe. Do you think that there there could be an impact in the suppliers? Let's say, it's gonna be a consolidation or it's gonna be more like a specialization? And then consolidation by specialization in the suppliers of magnetics in the next twenty years?
It's what I feel, eh?
In one minute, Rafael, because we already have time.
Sorry, sorry, Ellie, sorry, but it's really short, okay? But it's what I'm expecting. Yeah, we are now in a concentration time. That means that you will see after the years, less and less potential suppliers. It's natural selection, Tema.
MV, just to closing about this topic, you're saying here, right?
We we we, in our high salary countries, we only have one chance to survive. This is specialties, high engineering, high, high degree of 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 knowledge and and specialization. And this drives out all the, all the simple, basic winding houses to some, some areas on the world where it can be done. And what will stay here and what we need then for the for the for the new technologies is highly specialized products, and they need specialists to do it. So we will see consolidation and a lot of winding houses will certainly disappear.
Okay, so, well, I think have been very intense, but super, super interesting, this forum and discussion. Of course, this is recorded, so we will share with everyone and and it can be seen by a lot of people later.
Everybody is asking for both presentations. So congratulations for 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 the good topics you have selected for today.
So thank you very much for everybody. I don't know, Ellie, you wanna close with some words?
Yeah, thank you for MBB Electronics and thank you, Rafael, thank you for Triad, and thank you, Tema, for moderating these conversations today. I think we can, we can plan a future conversation for next months. Tomorrow, everybody will see the recording with some links on documents from MB Electronics and Triad. And let's, let's start then. Thank you, everybody, for joining today.
Thank you very much. See you soon.
Thank you very much.